Good morning, everybody. Good morning and welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting in the Green Room on Wednesday, July 3. And we will begin with the pledge led by Dennis Donovan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of our country, which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, are there any visitors who wish to speak? Visitors? All right. Seeing none, item number 2.1. I would like to ask the council for a motion to add to the agenda 11A, 2024 COPS Technology and Equipment Program Grant. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. I would also like to ask the council for a motion to add an executive session discussing personnel. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number three, the approval of minutes for June 19, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
There's a typo in it. It's at the end of the... It says assess versus access. Other than that, and I got abstained because I wasn't here.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention with Hank. All right. Thank you very much. Item number four, appointments and reappointments. We have one appointment for the Shellfish Commission, Fleming Gray, who is a Democrat, is seeking that term until June 30, 2025. Fleming, would you like to say anything?
Thank you for including me.
All right. You're welcome. Is there a motion to appoint Fleming?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next appointments are for Michelle Benavena, our new town manager, to the Middlesex County Revitalization Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Next is the Beautification Committee reappointments. All members are being reappointed for a term until 6/30/2026. And those members are Sherri Collins, Mary Jo Lanzalata, Bruce Slidy, Sandy Partis, Dave Smith, and Sherri Smith. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have the Blight Hearing Committee here, and that is simply to discuss that we need to think about adding another member. Yes. And yes.
So we need to have a committee that would be able to participate if we have any hearings coming up. So Mary reached out to the three that were currently on the Blight Hearing Committee, and one of them no longer is available to be on the committee anymore. So we are appointing one more person.
Okay. And so that application will go up online. It already has, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, just so we all know. All right. Item number five, the recognition of the Clinton Police Department's advanced law enforcement accreditation through the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, or CALEEA. Will all the members of the Police Department who are here with us this morning stand up, The council very much wants to honor you for this accreditation, which we understand very few towns in Connecticut have been honored with. On behalf of the council, I would like Mike Chove to speak for us, please.
Chief, thank you for coming today, and thank you and your team for the hard work you've put in. For the listening audience, I just want to point out a few things of what accreditation is and why it's important to the town of Clinton, to us. The department was officially awarded the accreditation status on March 23, 2024, in Montgomery, Alabama, after an extensive review and inspection process of the department. It must now show and comply annually with the program's 461 applicable law enforcement standards to maintain this prestigious designation. On the 143 law enforcement agencies in the state of Connecticut, only 30 have achieved this level of CALEEA accreditation. So thank you. The CALEEA process is a third-party objective oversight that ensures the Clinton Police Department will continue to be counted amongst the best law enforcement agencies within the state. So thank you again for all the hard work and dedication to your team.
And a member of the General Assembly would like to leave from the state.
This is an official citation from the state of Connecticut. Norm Deanman actually just texted me, so he is on his way to apologize for being late. I'm sure people know Norm, they love him. So on behalf of the General Assembly, official citation introduced by Senator Norm Deanman, 33rd District, Representative Chris Anstovitz, 35th District. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly offers its sincerest congratulations to the Clinton Police Department in recognition of achieving the CALEEA accreditation status by striving to follow the best established law enforcement practices while considering the needs of this community. The Clinton Police Department has demonstrated excellence in its service to many individuals and businesses who rely on their expertise. Thank you for your tireless dedication to the Clinton community. We are deeply appreciative of your continued support. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses hope for continued success, given this third day of July 2024 at the state capitol, Hartford, Connecticut.
I see some policemen there, plainclothes, street clothes today.
I have an understatement for me, too.
What's that? Oh, great. Good. Come on over. If you make this possible.
I'd also like to read something from William Tong, who also wishes he could be with you today. From the Office of the Attorney General, official citation, be it hereby known to all that the Attorney General offers his sincerest congratulations to the Clinton Police Department in recognition of achieving CALEEA accreditation status as testament to your best established law enforcement practices and your tireless dedication to excellence and professionalism in serving the Clinton community. The Attorney General extends his very best wishes on this significant occasion and expresses his hope for continued success.
Perfect. Just take a couple.
I think he feels more comfortable.
Okay. Okay. All right. We'll wait.
I haven't written a paper all along.
All right. Onto item number six, the presentation from Milano and Wantit for legal services. Oh, I'm sorry. The whole thing is going to go. Okay, great. All right. Wonderful. Okay, thanks. So on to number seven, Conservation Commission and Land Trust update on open space acquisition. Abby is here for us with a presentation.
And Nick Webb, our Chair of the Conservation Commission, is also here. He'll do the presentation, and I'm tech support.
Desperately needed. How do you follow that, though? So, Michael, you're new, so you missed the first presentation, so I included a brief review. Let's... And also, Tom Andrew is new, too. So what we're going to cover today, just real quick, is just a quick refresh. We'll go through the progress we've made so far. I can't stress enough that Abby has been amazing, as has our partners at the Land Trust. So none of us would have moved this far without them. We're going to talk a little bit about next steps, and then, as always, when I'm in front of you guys, what are the asks? And so we'll go through that as well. So, a quick refresher on what we're doing. There is a Conservation Commission town planner. We've been exploring the possibility of acquiring this parcel. The parcel, and there will be a map shortly, is 24 acres. When we came to you before, it was sort of in the 160 to 180 price range. It's now moved down to 159,000 due to appraisals. We'll get into that. It's currently owned by a family trust, so that's sort of complicated working through this because they haven't exactly been super responsive, but they... When you do get ahold of them, they're very engaging, and they're willing to work with us, which is great. What's unique about this property and why it's so exciting and why... I think we will top the police... You know, CALEEA. Sorry, guys. This is really exciting because it does put together 135 acres of contiguous space. This is truly amazing. It's like, you know, you couldn't paint a better opportunity. It's right off Route 81, and you can see, if I just go over here, this is the property in question, this little triangle, which is 24 acres. And you can see, anything that is in the ES, that's Eversource, Clinton Land Trust is surrounding it, as well as the Red Wing Foundation. So all of this stuff is open space. So these are... Go to the next slide. This is contiguous land corridors, which is great for putting together a proposal to deep for a grant. The property actually contains a mini road on the entrance at Route 81, so it's very easy to put a parking addition in there for people that want to hike. It's got beautiful views. It's, you know, it's got outcrops. It is just amazing property. So before I get further, there was interest, and I wanted to put together a quick hike through the property and contiguous properties. I got permission from the Land Trust that owns it. And just offering Saturday at 9:30, if anybody would like to come, take a look. We can meet at the Clinton Empoundment Parking Lot, which is across the street from it. Meet there at 9:30, and we can just do an hour-long walk, bring your dogs. Because, again, I think once you see it, you'll appreciate what we're going through and why we're doing this. It's been a lot of work, as Abby knows, and our poor guys at the Land Trust. So in order to get a deep grant, there's many, many steps... Oh, I'm sorry. I'll walk over here. There's many steps that you got to go through. First, you got to get two independent appraisals. Really, it's one appraisal and one review. We've done that, and that's what got us to the $159,000. We need an A2 survey. We've got one, but it needs to be updated. So not quite as expensive as doing it from scratch, but it actually is not going to be cheap. We've got to do a title search and environmental study. All those things are required to put in a deep grant. The first step of the process, we got a tag grant, which is from the Connecticut Land Conservation Trust. And that allows us to do some of this work so that we can apply for a deep grant. So it's different, completely different from the deep grant. In addition, Clinton, as you may recall, contributed $3,000 to this process. We applied... So after we got the appraisals, we put in the... We've done the negotiation with the Family Foundation. We applied for a second tag grant. Thank you, Abby. And we've won that at $10,000. So that will allow us to keep going through this process. It's not the full amount, but it's a good chunk of it. So I just want to make sure that you're aware that we're trying to take every step to conserve Clinton money. As I said, the appraisals came in at $159,000. So for 24 acres, this is really kind of a remarkable purchase. The property owners have accepted that $159,000 after they saw the appraisals, and they've signed a letter of intent. And what's great about it is they're going to work with us to an August 2025 purchase date, 2025, with some naming convention. You know, they are... And it actually works out really well because they're the Greystone Family Trust. So having Greystone Park, and there's a lot of gray stones up there, kind of makes sense. So there's been a little bit of a naming commitment there, but nothing that any of us should get upset about, unless, of course, you wanted to call the Hank Teskey, you know, Park. It's not going to be that. Good news, then the Land Trust, and this is Mike Castiglione, and that's Mike Hood. They got the Land Trust to agree to purchase this. So we're moving along at a very... It seems slow, but it's kind of a fast clip for this kind of stuff. Okay. So what's next? We got to submit the deep grant most likely in September. It has not come out yet, so I just actually looked online a couple days ago. It was not out. What is going to be required from Clinton is we're going to... I'm going to ask you for some additional money for some of the surveys and things like that. They do get expensive. And then ultimately, in order to win a deep grant, it does help if the town in question is going to kick in some money. So I'm going to ask for a capital commitment. And again, remember, it's an August 2025 purchase date. So the capital commitment would be, you know, what the budget that comes out in July of 2025. So we've got time, but there really does need to be some commitment from Clinton to do it. There needs to be some commitment from the Land Trust. And then, I still need Abby's help to finish up all the applications because we can't do it without her. I mean, it's been really, really helpful. The Land Trust, then, also has to come up with a stewardship plan. They're ultimately going to be where the property resides, so there's no ownership from Clinton's perspective, which is a good thing. There's no cost, there's no maintenance, upkeep, any of that stuff that falls squarely with those guys, which is where it should be. So that's where we're going. That's the next steps coming up. So here are the asks. I promised they were coming. Obviously, continue to work with Abby. Help us fund some of the necessary pre-sale studies that we need to go through to apply to deep. Well, and also just to put a purchase and sale together. You know, things like title search, the surveys, the environmental survey. There's just a lot there, and I'm hopeful we have money that still is well-funded in the Open Space Land Acquisition Fund, so it's sitting in a bank account specifically for this purpose. So I'd love to get a... Not only sort of they can use the leftover money from the first grant we gave them or the first funding that we gave them, but also another 6275. That should be adequate to get the studies done, the deep grant request in, and continue moving the ball along. And these things, obviously, they're time limited. We're in July, we have to submit in September. Seems like a far time away, but these studies take time, so we need to move now. And from a long-term perspective, I talked about it, commit to putting at least 50K of capital commitment into next year's budget. That'll help us with the Department of Environmental's grant request. They do look for that when they're going to... And we're going to ask for a big slug of money from them so that they will turn it on. Obviously, the Land Trust is going to contribute as well to this process. So... And we're going to look elsewhere for additional funding. You know, Eversource and some of these other places will kick in. So I'm going to leave you with the benefits because the Guilford Courier just recently talked about the land acquisition going on in Guilford, and they did studies that found out that purchasing open space, great for the planet, but also good for the town budget, believe it or not, because it increases property values and it's just good for recreation. It is not a pickleball court, I know that, but having hiking lands is really, really important. And we kind of are missing that in Clinton, and this would be the first major hiking area that we would have in Clinton, which is pretty exciting. So any questions?
So you need a motion today for the 60...
Yeah, I need a motion today for the 6275, and I'm not sure what we can do in terms of the... I defer to you guys in terms of how we can show the Department of Environmental Protection that Clinton is standing behind this in a way that will help them fund it as of, you know, like I said, we're going to put the grant request in September. My understanding is usually we hear end of the year to possibly, the state of Connecticut, you know, possibly into the first quarter of next year. And so we're planning for the acquisition in August 2025.
So on our agenda today, we have a motion for the 6275.
Okay, great.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve an appropriation of 6275 from the Open Space Acquisition Fund to provide funding to the Clinton Land Conservation Trust in support of survey, environmental review, and title research necessary to facilitate an application to the Deep Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Act?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much, Nick and Abby.
Thanks. So Saturday at 9:30, is anybody interested? Just... Yes? Okay, cool. We'll be there.
Okay. All right. So item number eight is Public Works mower replacement. Did I see Todd here? Great. Todd, would you like to speak first?
Good morning, everyone. What we've done in the past, done two other times, we've tried to harvest leftover funds in the capital budget for projects as we close those out, trying to harvest money to take things off future capital. So I was looking to purchase another mower. Currently, trying to keep eight active mowers running through the fields, grounds, we have over 180 to grass. And I'm trying to purchase another one to keep that and retire some old ones that were keeping running. So that's what I'm looking for. Bob's already got the transfers, we've got the money to do it, the state bid purchase.
You're taking the money from the backhoe?
Backhoe. So transfer station funds that we've moved up, created the technology and a mower, a previous mower.
So where does that leave you with the backhoe?
That was done for purchase. Bids came in last... When we did that, it came in last month.
Any other questions? So this is looking... This is a resolution to repurpose account balances to purchase a new X-Mark 60 mower utilizing a state bid amount of $13,684.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I'm here for the next agenda.
Okay, great. I'm trying to say I'm here. Back when the charter was changed last year, prior to the old charter, anything over $100,000, even on any type of competitive bid list, state bid list, had to go out to bid. The town didn't allow us to utilize it. The charter now allows us to utilize it, purchasing. Now, we're in the process, we have a Capeliner, and we're purchasing a new truck for the transfer station, which is $177,000, so it's over 100,000. I'm looking for the council to approve me to use the state bid, which has been in place since 2014, and stay with the Freightliner truck and purchase the truck without having to go out to bid.
So if you choose a vendor from the state list, then you don't have to put it out to bid?
Correct.
Okay.
We've been utilizing that, we've been doing it, we've been buying from state bid as long as I can remember. It's just that we always had to do the corollary of going out to bid. It's just a lot of time. And not to mention today's climate, the quicker we can get in and get on the truck list, because we wait, we have to wait, I'd rather get in, we're on borrowed time as it is. And along with that is also state is paving. We have always used state VIP bid list with tilt up to do our road paving, but we've always had to go out to bid, and that's true, we end up getting a higher bid. Because if they have to take the time to prepare a bid, for me, they don't use state bid list, they use their own, so we actually get an increase. By using VIP, I actually get a lower price per ton. So looking for the council just to approve us to use the state bid list.
For all instances or for this particular...
These two, we have, I think we have to do it by instance, by the charter, so for the truck and for paving. And if anything else comes up in a few years, we'll have to come back to the charter.
So looking for a motion to allow Public Works to utilize state bid list for the purchase of a replacement transfer station truck and road paving?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thanks, Todd. Okay. Item number 10, Homeland Security Authorizing Resolution, and I understand Mike Neff will speak to us about that.
This is the annual MOA that the town co-signs with the CAG. Basically, allows us to participate in the RPT, where we get state assets. Our signed trailer that the town presently manages is from that fund, and then we're also eligible for reimbursement grants for different Demus-related items. So we sign it every year.
What does that require us to do in exchange for the benefits that we get?
So I attend a meeting every month and participate in the RPT Steering Committee and then the RPT on the town's behalf. And then we can apply to be the managing agent for a state asset. So like the signed trailer, we can use it whenever we want. It's technically, like, it's ours, but if another municipality needs it and we're not using it, we just give it to them for that time being, and then they return it. For instance, Madison took this, is taking the signed trailer today for their fireworks, and then they'll return it on Monday.
How do they get the money to pay for the signed trailer or anything like that?
State and federal grants. It's all state and federal money. We just... So that the Demus purchases it with the RPT's permission, and then we take ownership of it. But they're all over it. There's light towers, generators, signed trailers, burn trailers, payloaders. We fund a lot of stuff for the South Central SWAT team. We fund a lot of stuff for the South Central SWAT team. So it's, it's all emergency-related. We don't have to put any money in. We just-
You get the benefits.
Yeah. Every, every town and region too signs the same document and participates the same way. And the state, I mean, might get correctly or wrong, but-
Spot on.
It's the whole state.
And there's a couple of copies. We don't have enough for everyone because it's quite a cumbersome document, but there is a copy floating around, if you'd like to look at it, of the MOU and the document that gives a little bit more details of what is included and an outline of the obligation.
So we're looking for a motion authorizing the resolution of the Town Council.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All, oh, okay.
One second. I brought this to Michelle's attention the other day. It refers to Michelle as he in the resolution, so I mean, he to she.
Appreciate that.
Yes. Other than that, everything looks good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Item number 11, Economic Development Part-Time Position. And I will ask Michelle to speak to that.
Okay. Good morning. So my first few weeks, I have met with many departments, and I've also met with the EDC and the Chamber and placemakers. And you have a thriving community with a lot happening, wonderful things taking place to bring people to Clinton. And we also have a lot happening in the Planning Office of businesses coming to town. There's so much going on that we really need someone to, from the town side, to help coordinate that, to help facilitate that the efforts and information of the various organizations and agencies work together. So this would be a part-time position. They would also work on seeking grants and help with developing and implementing strategic plans to attract businesses and industry to Clinton. So currently, this, there's been a line item in your budget for this position. Last year, it was 10,000. There was a little bit that had to be moved for the library. So there is 8,900 and some cents in that. And the current budget fiscal year, there's 17,000 in that line item. So I am asking to have, to do a transfer to of the funds from '24 fiscal year brought over so that we can have a more desirable hourly rate to attract someone who is qualified for this role. It would be about 15 hours a week, a flexible schedule based on, you know, what's happening in town and night meetings. The hourly rate would range between $25 and $35 an hour. And that would, like I said, would allow me some, you know, more opportunities to get someone qualified for this position. So I'll be working on the job description. So I would like the council to support that. And then also, we do have that line transfer request on the agenda also to, oh, actually we don't, sorry. We don't need that, right? But Bob, do we not need to do the transfer?
We can do that another time.
Another time, okay.
But we need to get the funds from this fiscal year to-
Okay. Okay. So does anyone have any questions about this?
Does anyone have any questions for Michelle?
No, I understand it.
So we're taking the 17 that we already have allocated and then adding 89?
Right. We have 17, right? And we have 89 in last year's fiscal year. So I'd like to, it's gonna be, the transfer will be for next meeting. But we would like to move that into the 17 so there's more money to work with, to have a more desirable hourly rate.
So they're looking for a resolution requesting the reappropriation of 8905 and account 01460351320, salaries part-time in the Economic Development Department to fiscal year 2024-25. Correct.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, the amended item, 11A, the 2024 COPS Technology and Equipment Program Grant. And Michelle, are you speaking to that?
The chief, I thought.
Okay, great. Fantastic.
I like this, reminds me of testifying. Capital all the time, so. The seat I'm getting comfortable in, unfortunately. Only for good things. So what am I talking about?
The grant for, do I call it COPS Technology?
Yeah, so the COPS Technology Grant is, is a small part of the much greater radio project that you know that we've been involved in for the past several years. We have, the first phase of that project has been completed, that we have redone our Emergency Communications Center. All of our new consoles are in place, up and running. This piece was part of the overall structure to replace the entire system. Basically, we've broken it down into three parts. It is a town-wide radio system, so it not only supports the police department, it supports the fire department, it supports DPW as well. So it breaks down into Emergency Communications Center, which is our consoles, that's the 911 center when you call in. All that equipment has been upgraded. That hadn't been supported, the product that we had in there had been unsupported by Motorola for three years before it was replaced. The second piece is called subscriber units, and that is basically all the handheld radios and the car radios that that base talks to when dispatchers dispatch emergency services. And the last piece is infrastructure, which is the towers, repeaters, and all basically the internal guts to make that system work. With that, we have several sites, and we're gonna be moving those, but that's not part of this grant. Part of this COPS Technology Grant is $600,000 that has been allotted to us through a federal grant, through the COPS program, specifically through a burn grant, which is directed at law enforcement. And that would, the money, the $600,000 that we would receive from the federal government would be to buy subscriber units for the PD as part of the overall project. So our handheld portables and our mobile radios inside the cars. The issue being, Michelle's been kind of throwing it to the fire, and Mary and myself, we were granted this award back in April, where we were notified of the grant. However, we specifically weren't notified. Carl was notified, and Carl's email wasn't up and running. So we came into this, as soon as Michelle got on board, we were able to find out that we did have the money. And now we're kind of underneath the timeline, trying to get that, our SAM accounts and our government grant accounts up and running so that we can receive the money. We started a paper trail, so I've already sent out everything that I could, and Michelle has sent out as well, saying, listen, we don't want to lose the money, we're trying to get it to our account, and we're working on that diligently to get that done. But I would ask that you allow us to accept that grant. Obviously, it's a major part of this entire radio infrastructure project, which needs to be replaced. Our portables haven't been supported for over two years now, and our mobiles as well. So we're looking at a point where we could face catastrophic failure, and when that happens, I don't want to think of the implications of what that means to public safety. Somebody's gonna get hurt, somebody's gonna get killed. And I don't want to sound dramatic, but that's the long and short of it. Without radio communications, it's mission-critical for public safety.
Okay. So looking for a motion to authorize a town manager, Michelle Benavent-
If you don't mind, ask a question?
No, no, go right ahead.
What's the commitment from the town to, in order to take the 600,000 from the federal government?
Basically, we just have to follow the reporting system that's in place. So the money's already been allocated to us through the COPS grant. This is just a weird setup for this one. Normally, when the money is allotted and given to you, it's just given to you, but this one has two extra steps there. They want us to refill an application, basically just to outline what the overall cost of the project is. So it's just basically reporting. There's no fiscal commitment on our side.
And so you said it's three phases. The first phase was the 911 calling center, and the second is the portables in the cars and what you carry, and that's what we're doing now.
Correct. Well, we're trying to do the whole thing because there's incentive pricing. So we do receive major discounts from whatever vendor we're gonna go from, purchase from. So we're gonna try and do those together. We just basically break it out, broke it out into three different parts so everybody can understand exactly, you know, how the whole system works.
I thought the third part was, you said there's like repeaters and towers.
Correct.
And so you're trying to do that at the same time as the-
We get better incentive pricing to do that, so it's cost advantageous to do that all at once. If we buy subscribers and do the, and sign up for the infrastructure money, we can have it parsed out, billing over extended periods of time, but we still get a better price if we sign up for the whole project at once.
So optimally, if everything goes as we plan, when would this project be completed?
It would be, hopefully, optimally, if we can get it done by March or May of 2025, that would be a fast track. Post-COVID, it's been very difficult with radios, and that's why we're hoping to move along a little bit faster because the lead times on getting all the equipment and getting everything in takes a long time. And because there was such a backup because of COVID, the programming of all the radios is a very intricate process, takes a long time, and the vendors are kind of falling behind on that as well. So there's a long lead time to get our radios actually programmed to our capabilities.
Any other questions? All right. So motion to authorize the town manager, Michelle Benaventia, to enter into an agreement on behalf of the town under the FY 2024 COPS Technology and Equipment Program Grant for the Public Safety Radio Equipment Project.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. And since you're here-
So I figured, I was gonna, I was gonna steal Todd's, nobody already used it, so. I'm already here, so.
Streamlined agenda, thank you. Discussion on Crown Castle Tower rental.
So as, as many of you may know, or mostly of you weren't here when this whole adventure began with Crown Castle. Back in June of 2017, we entered into an agreement with the town of Madison for the Range Road site, which is part of the overall infrastructure system of the radios. There's one repeater site over there at Ridge Road in Madison. The town of Madison actually owns the property that Crown Castle's tower sits on, and they receive revenue from that. They need, they upgraded their radio system at the time, and they needed some microwave connection back from our metal road tower, and they were building a fully enclosed structure to house all the radio equipment. At that point, they invited us to move our equipment, which was housed just in a storage trailer with an outside generator and a couple other pieces of equipment, into their climate-controlled building, which is much better for the radio system. So we took that, we gave them a little bit of our bandwidth to come back and removed all of our footprint, basically, from the Crown Castle site, other than two directional antennas which sat up on their aerial mast. I informed Crown Castle that's, that's what we were doing, and part of the agreement with the town of Madison, with us moving into their building, was that the revenue share that went to Madison was going to be remitted. So they weren't gonna accept that. So Crown Castle shouldn't charge us that. They continued to charge, and they continued to charge us, and we've been back and forth for a period of seven years. And they were not very forthcoming with their pricing structure. They kept telling us that it was proprietary, and they wouldn't tell us how it was working. So Carl and I, as soon as Carl came on, we'd worked on this and worked on this and worked on this. We finally have received an estimate of what they're going to charge us, which is where we should be. The reason we have to get it done now is to move forward with the radio project. We're gonna be coming out of that site at Range Road and moving to the Arts Barn, which is closer to the town line. It's right on the Madison main campus, and Madison wants the, any kind of issue, billing issue settled with Crown Castle before we go ahead and move, so.
So it's rent that we had to pay for the space in the Crown Castle facility?
Correct.
And we're gonna vacate that space?
We will be, once the new radio system is up and running, correct. We're gonna move our, we're gonna move that site, it's gonna be transferred to the Madison Arts Barn, and then we have another site, which is Metal Road, and that's gonna be moved over to the Westbrook side, to the Lee Water Company, has a tower there, we're gonna place our equipment there. And we will actually, at that point, other than our Cow Hill site, will be out of the rental game for, for antenna space and sites. So we will own all of our sites, or not have to pay for them, other than one Crown Castle site at Cow Hill.
So this will get us current?
This will get us current, and then we will, we've already said that we're gonna be probably vacating within the year, so.
So we'll pay monthly until we vacate?
Correct.
And there's no lease term that we have to break?
No, we're not going to, we're not gonna sign anything that has a lease term.
And the rate for this rental seems reasonable, what we're paying for the back rent?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know how much you want to discuss in open session, but-
It's pretty, it's definitely beneficial to us to settle it now.
Any other questions? So that leads us into the first of our line item transfers, to settle a contract disagreement relating to emergency services, tower monthly rentals from Crown Castle in the amount of $38,104.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right. That transfer passes. Thank you very much. The next of our transfers deals with what we spoke of at the last meeting, and that is the thermal imaging cameras. And we discussed where that money was going to come from, and that we would have that line item transferred today. And that is to acquire 10 thermal imaging cameras for the fire department, the amount of $100,000, and that would be taken from the state retirement contribution.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any, any discussion?
How do we take money from our state retirement contribution?
So when the budget was initially done in March, we received a letter from the state that SEEMERS was going to be charging us 19.57% for our contribution. So that's what was budgeted. In June, we received a letter that it actually ended up being significantly less, so it was 15.85%. So we have an excess amount of money in our SEEMERS, our retirement fund, due to budgeting based on what we were initially told. So we have the funds there. So by using that, we are not contributing more to our fund balance and staying within our budgeted amount for operations.
What was the savings from retirement? Do we have the full savings?
That we're taking this $100,000 from?
Absolutely. Yes, yes. Because they budgeted based on, they budgeted to, for 19.57%, and because we came in under, we have, I don't know the exact dollar amount excess in that account, but we have the funds for the $100,000.
It's over about $150,000 savings.
The savings was $150,000.
Plus, yes.
So we're gonna use $100,000 of that?
Correct.
Still leaves about $50,000 left?
Yes.
And, and that's in the budget ending June 30th?
That's in the budget that you suspended, that we're working on closing, that that you will be closing around middle of August.
So that $50,000 that's undesignated at the end of the year will have, if we have an excess amount that goes to the undesignated fund balance?
Right. We had, I had estimated on the expenditure side that we'd have savings totaling about $750,000. So if you take away the $200,000, this is savings about $650,000.
So is there a motion for a line item?
There was.
Oh, there was? Okay, that was discussion?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right. The final transfer is for Parks and Rec, and that's in order to balance the budget.
I don't see Bo here.
I don't either. I see Norm, though.
So does he want to speak upon it?
Well, do we need Bo?
Or do you need, I mean, do you need, do you have any questions regarding the transfer?
Anybody have any questions?
It was for the repair to the splash pad.
Okay. All right.
How, how much money is it?
Twenty-four, a little, about $2,600, I believe.
They're taking it from travel expense and general supplies and just putting it in- They're taking it from travel expense and general supplies and just putting it in.
Right, within their own department, yes.
Family Day.
Yep. Exactly. So if there's no more discussion, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Dennis?
Okay, so they're increasing the family day, correct?
Yes.
And repairs are made, it's all right. I just, okay, no, I've answered my own question here, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. So that's it for the line item transfer, and we're on to number 14, and that is the town manager's report.
Okay. So a couple of things that I want to, um, let you know about. So as many people have probably realized, the soccer turf field, um, the design that was put on the circle spelling Clinton, um, was not installed the way that it was supposed to be installed. It was reversed. The letters faced spelling Clinton that were supposed to be facing the, um, bleachers were not put the correct way, so it's reversed. Also, the letters are not correctly angled, and the T and the N are almost touching. So I met with the, a couple of members of the commission and Bo on Friday morning. Um, they are going to be working with the, um, company and having that taken out. They are going to be having a new design, most likely, the commission has to officially decide, but most likely just a big C in the center of the circle, and, um, it will not at all affect the integrity of the turf, um, and it will be much more easy to install, and we don't have to worry about potential design flaws as we experienced this time. So they have a special meeting on July 8th, um, where they're going to discuss this and take action. Um, they assured me that this will not affect the, um, closure of the fields. They will be able to be back open, um, as scheduled on August 15th. So that will be addressed. Um, the human services director, um, has accepted the position. Her name is Kathy Grega. She is going to be officially starting on July 23rd, so, um, I will have her come to the, uh, first town council meeting after she starts, so you can all meet her. And then we have scheduled an ARPA workshop for Wednesday, July 17th, an hour before our normal, um, scheduled, uh, town council meeting for 6 o'clock to review the remaining ARPA funds, project status, and, um, the, review the applicants for, um, small businesses and nonprofits that received ARPA funding. And that is my report.
Uh, one comment?
Sure.
Going back to that field, I also noticed that, that email that I think we all received from some concern.
Yes, I did respond to him.
About the spelling and all.
Mm-hmm.
He also brought up the, uh.
He brought up the line.
About the line coming through the center.
That's the first.
How would you address that? Because you're very familiar with the soccer program over there.
Yeah, I mean, her, her comment about off sides, that, that doesn't apply to off sides, but I actually was up at the turf in North Branford, and I was looking at the way they're set up, and they all have the line going through.
They have the line going through?
So, um, you know, I think, I'd be interested in everyone's thoughts, and we have a meeting on Tuesday. I have my own personal thoughts, like, and, and full disclosure, I voted on it. I said, yeah, Clinton looks great, take away the Husky. Now that I see it, I'm like, ah, it's a little underwhelming. Um, I don't really like it, and, but there's only so much you can do. You know, the turf's already down. The turf looks beautiful, it's a great job, turf looks awesome. It's just aesthetics that are there that, you know, if you guys have thoughts, either come to the meeting on Tuesday or send me an email, and I'll bring them up. I mean, I, I would love to maybe, you know, see a little bit of a Husky or something in the middle instead of nothing. There's just nothing there. Um, and maybe, you know, revisit Clinton versus Morgan. Um, the commission decided to go with Clinton because there's youth sports that play there. It's actually technically not Morgan's field, it's Clinton's field. So that's why we decided to go with Clinton instead of Morgan. Um, but, you know, I've heard from a lot of the youth organizations who all aspire and look up to Morgan, and that's, they, you know, they love playing on that field and feeling like it's like the Morgan field. So I'm going to bring all that up. It's not my decision, it's the commission's decision. I'm going to bring up my opinions on Tuesday. Um, so let me know your thoughts, and we, we'll talk, talk through it.
The line was not brought up as a, at, on Friday. Um, that was, when I read the gentleman's email, um, that was the first I've, I don't play soccer, I'm not really familiar with it, um, but I did not know or hear prior about the line. Um, I know that the commission is going to be, um, reviewing the, there was two presentations, I believe. One was with the big C in the center and then Clinton. I think they were, they were tending to go back to the C. Um, the important thing to remember, though, is that the letters are glued on and the turf is sewed. So the idea would be if they take out the Clinton, they can potentially sew the strips. Um, so the integrity of the field would be more intact versus sewing. You also want to stay on the timeline of the 15th, and if you start redesigning, um, the, the creation of that insert, um, might delay it. So I think that's what they're trying to be mindful of.
Right. I agree with all that. Like, that's why I said, there's only so much I think you can do.
Right.
And I'm not an expert on turf, you know? I don't want them to have to rip it up and certainly not delay. The high school starts August 19th, so.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for Michelle? And I understand that you responded to Jerry?
I responded to Jerry this morning, or, I'm sorry, last evening. And I did, and I received a nice, uh, email back from him.
Great, thank you for doing that. All right, so, um, on to 15, the chairman's report. Um, it is wonderful to see, um, the, moving forward so quickly on, um, a, like, getting a blind committee together to address something there, um, on the hiring of the human services director, which has been, um, uh, empty that seat for, I guess, a year now. The quick work on the radio program and being able to get that money and make sure that we don't lose it. Um, it's nice to see, it's wonderful to see, um, so little transition time, and a town manager who is able to take the job and every aspect of it and work so quickly to catch up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Um, council discussion? Anybody? No? Okay. Um, town council committee liaison reports?
Ellen Wetlands is still looking for a person.
Ellen Wetlands is still, maybe I'll visit them sometime.
I attended the meeting last night, actually. But I, I don't really have much to report, but I did attend it last night.
Okay, all right. Anyone else with?
Just, um, you know, the other projects for Park and Rec are going well. The, the, um, pickleball is making progress. If you stop down there and look at it, you know, they're just, they're ticking things off, and I think it should be done within like the next month, I would say. Um, you know, that's my, my view, who knows? Um, they, and then the bleachers are all ripped down, they've pulled, they've poured the foundations, um, they're working on some aesthetic things to the press box, and the, um, the scoreboard has been ordered, and, and Bo, I talked to Bo, he said that everything will, should be good for start of football season down there, so that's good. Um, and part of the meeting is to talk about, you know, the basketball court, uh, that